We all rise for a pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary perform a roll call attendance, please.
Here.
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 Here. Okay. All members of the board receive the minutes from the March 20th meeting. If there's no discussion regarding the minutes, entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, motions made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, our first item on the agenda this evening is public hearing for site plan and special use permit for CarMax Auto Superstore.
Good evening, Chairman Board. My name is Jennifer Gray, I'm with the law firm of Keenan Bean from White Plains, and we're pleased to be here tonight for the public hearing on the CarMax application. With me tonight, I've got a team here, we've got John Thatcher, the project manager, Paul Mercier, the principal of lighting design innovations, our lighting expert, Karen Majanowski from Bowler Engineering, as well as my colleague Rick O'Rourke from Keenan Bean, and Steve Hudeck from CarMax. So we are here for the public hearing on the site plan and special permit application for an auto dealership on about a seven and a half acre property located on Route 9 in the HB Highway Business District, the former location of the old Plant Depot. As you know, the site's been vacant for many years. The site is constrained due to lack of municipal water and sewer currently, and that's contributed to a lack of successful development proposals over the years. So with the proposed use, our goal is for the site to be reinvigorated, cleaned up, and put back to productive use in your highway business district. We were last before the board on March 6th. On March 24th, we did submit comments, response to comments to your consultants, as well as a revised set of plans. Tonight, the members of our team will go over those plans with you, present the latest and the greatest. And with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to John Thatcher to provide an overview of the project and the site. We also have Paul Mercier here, as I mentioned, to speak to lighting, and Karen to speak to site engineering. So we look forward to hearing comments from the board and comments from the public, so thank you.
Okay, just a matter of formality, I need a motion to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Some of...
Okay.
I second it.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Okay. Good evening, my name is John Thatcher with Centerpoint Integrated Solutions, consultant for CarMax. Appreciate you having us all here tonight. It's been a lengthy process to get to this point. We've been working with the planning board for over a year now, and we appreciate all of your input along the way. Obviously, many of you have heard the details of this project, but seeing this is our first public hearing, we have probably some new people to the project here. I did want to give a more global overview, starting with CarMax as a company, very briefly. CarMax is the nation's largest retailer of used cars. They started in 1993, they've grown to 220 locations in 41 states. Thanks to their honest, transparent, and high integrity experience they offer to customers. They've got 27,000-plus associates nationwide, and they are committed to those associates. They are one of Training Magazine's top companies in the country, and Fortune Magazine's best place to work, on the best place to work list for the past 19 years and counting. Now, turning to the proposal here in Wappinger, I have up on the screen the aerial of the existing conditions at the site on Route 9 at the southwest corner of the Smithtown Road intersection. The site is currently vacant. There's a building, a former Plant Depot site surrounded by paving. The proposal for the CarMax facility would completely remove the existing improvements and would be a total redevelopment of the site. CarMax's new development would occupy a smaller footprint than the existing facility and reduce the number of driveways down from four to two. The existing mature landscaping on Osborne Hill Road would be maintained and enhanced as part of this redevelopment. So, the plan on the screen now is the proposed layout for the CarMax facility. Brief overview of the operations, there would be buildings more or less centered on the site. Major components there are the sales building and the service building. And then, there are kind of three distinct areas of the site surrounding that. There's the sales display area towards the east on Route 9. And around the southern edge, there's a customer employee lot to the north of the building. And there is an employee-controlled lot to the west of that, where car carrier loading spaces are located. And then there is a staging area, kind of on the west and south of the site, where it's kind of CarMax's backup house area, it's screened and secured area where cars are stored, staged as they're awaiting other activities on-site. As far as operations on the site goes, all access will come from the two access points on Smithtown Road. Customers using the easternmost entrance, with the westernmost entrance being for car carriers and CarMax employee activity. The loading spaces are located in that employee-controlled area of the lot there. Customer parking would be towards the front of that area, closest to the building entrances. To get out to the sales display area, customers would park in the public parking lot and enter the building and be escorted out to the sales display area by a CarMax associate. That sales display area is a secured area with a low guardrail and gates for access, and is really more of CarMax's kind of outdoor showroom area for their vehicles. As far as the buildings go, the sales component of the building is just what it sounds like. Sales desks and offices, restrooms, employee break rooms. The service portion of the building, more towards the rear, where they have bays for vehicle service, that would be light retail-type service, oil changes, tire rotation, things of that nature, no major mechanical or bodywork or painting or anything like that. And the bay doors from that service area open to that staging area, which once again is that screened and secured area in the rear of the site. So, the plan you see here tonight is the result of a lot of hard work and negotiations and back and forth between the CarMax team and the town and their staff and their consultants. As I mentioned, we've been working on this for over a year now. We've made many adjustments to the site plan during that time. Just to recap a few of them, you know, we've moved the building closer to Route 9, we've shifted the whole site forward towards Route 9 to provide a larger buffer in the rear. We've increased landscaping throughout, especially within the sales display area up front, which is something CarMax doesn't typically do. And in the rear of the site, where we would be adjacent to residential properties across Osborne Hill Road. And we've added loading spaces, and we've also set aside a utility easement through the rear of the site for the future extension of public sanitary sewer. So, I do want to point out that, you know, this is the result of a year-plus process with the town. We appreciate working with you. I did want to also address, oh, I forgot to mention, obviously, the... We've worked extensively with the planning board and the staff on the lighting proposal.
Excuse me, do you hold the comments? I'll open the floor to public comment in a little bit.
Okay. I'll try to speak into the microphone a little more closely. And I'm happy to recap the operations on the site very briefly. The sales display area is this portion, if you can see the cursor. I don't have a laser.
You can point on the board if you want to, I know that might be more useful.
Have that face the audience.
Yeah.
Route 9 is up here, Smithtown Road, Osborne Hill Road. This would be the sales display area for the light authority. This portion of the lot is the customer employee parking area. This portion is the employee control area. The building on site, sales component, service component, car wash. And this is the staging area. Okay. And I did want to address a few letters of opposition that we had received earlier today. Obviously, we've only had those for a short time. But there were a few topics in there that I wanted to touch on briefly, and then, obviously, we have the entire project team here. If we want to get into more detail on any one of these topics, we've got the subject matter experts here to do that. But briefly, you know, those letters brought up issues regarding lighting, sanitary, septic issues, water and stormwater. In terms of the lighting, obviously, we've worked extensively with the planning board and consultant staff on the lighting plan that is in front of you, is part of this application. We have reduced our light levels significantly to comply with code. We have zero light spill across the property line as the new lighting code requires. We've even installed louvers on the light poles around the perimeter of the site to shield the actual point source of light, so that you can't even see it from more than seven feet away. We are asking for a waiver for the pole height, but that's simply to reduce light pollution and glare, and will help with the aesthetics of the site. Something that appeared to be acceptable at our last meeting. And that waiver does not negate the fact, or does not change the fact, that we are complying with the new lighting codes, light level standards, with the zero, the light levels on-site, the zero-foot light spill off the property, et cetera. It is a very restrictive code, and we have gone to great extents to comply with it. I've been working with CarMax for a number of years, and we've done projects in dark sky communities and near observatories. And this site will be darker than any of those. It will be the single lowest light levels CarMax has ever done on any site by a significant factor, actually. And so, again, just wanted to reiterate that, you know, for those of you here for the first time, this has been a long process to get to the code-compliant light plan we now have. As far as water and sewer and stormwater comments go, just to briefly touch on a few of those things, as discussed, you know, the site does not have public sanitary sewer available to it, it will have a septic system. The car wash on the site will be a self-contained system that recycles water. It will not be connected to the septic system in any way. And the flow's coming from the buildings, there'll be two separate lines coming out of the buildings. The one from the service building will go through an oil-water separator before discharged, as is typical. There is a well on-site, we are reusing the existing well. This is the same well that irrigated all the plants when this was an operating business with the Plant Depot site. We have investigated that well, it's a high-yield well, and will have no issues with CarMax's relatively low water usage. And at the end of the day, the septic and the well will require approval from county health, and we will be pursuing the necessary permits there for them to make their determination, so. And stormwater, there are certain environmental measures in place that we have our engineering group here, which can address in more detail if needed. But, all that to say, you know, through this year-long process and through working with the town and then the reviewers and the consultants, you know, we have addressed all of these issues. And so, credit to the town and the reviewers for bringing those issues up and for us properly addressing them. So, I do feel like the plan we have in front of you is, has changed significantly from the initial proposal, and we feel like we're in a good spot with it. So, to complete my presentation, I do have just a few more materials to show you. We have the elevations for the proposed building that you can see here.
Yes, could you have that on the boards as well? If you can, just turn that back around so that I can, the camera up above can pick that up. Thank you.
So, we've got the elevations of the buildings here. Obviously, architectural elevations don't tell the whole story. We do have actual photo examples. This is from a recently-built facility in Florida, which would be the same prototype building, minor modifications to the layout, but you can see the quality of the materials and the aesthetics of the building. Obviously, the palm trees will be changed out for something else here. We've also got a few renderings of the site. The first one here, this is from kind of further south on Route 9, looking northwest back towards the site. This would be from the intersection of Route 9 and Smithtown, looking southwest towards the interior of the site. We've got one from Smithtown at the proposed driveways there, again, looking back towards the site. And then one from the rear, doing our best to approximate those large existing mature landscaping along Smithtown Road, or excuse me, Osborne Hill Road. So, hopefully, that gives a better visual representation of exactly what is proposed. In closing, we appreciate, once again, the town's input to get to this point. We feel like we've got a great plan that hopefully works for all. I've got the rest of the project team here to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If we could, I would like to actually let our lighting consultant come up and expand upon my comments on the lighting, if I could.
Yeah, it's fine.
Good evening, Paul Mercier, Lighting Design Innovations. I'm here on behalf of CarMax to talk about the lighting design, and I really appreciate the time that I've spent with the board and with the planner. The entire group is, as you're well aware, we've had some challenges when it comes to lighting. I got brought on board, my role for this project was literally to come in after you had put in place a new lighting code. And my job was to try and get CarMax over the finish line by meeting all of the aspects of that code. I want to tell you that I have worked on a lot of major automobile dealerships in both state and national parks. And I can tell you that this is the lowest level and the best mitigation of glare and light pollution that I've ever worked on to date. And I've received Royal Astronomical Society awards for my work with car dealerships in those types of sensitive areas. So I think the element that I really want to address here was that the light levels themselves and the uniformity, which is really the evenness of the illumination on the site, is really important. There are three things that I think are important about any lighting design. One is making sure there is very little light pollution, making sure that there is no light coming off the site, so that our neighbors are well taken care of. And the last one is glare, and there are a number of different ways of taking care of those glare issues. And the way we did it is in a very unusual approach, and one that is unique to this particular project and this particular site. What we've done is add additional louvers on all of the light fixtures that are around the perimeter, not so much so that you can not have light come off the property, but so that you can't actually see the light source. So for those that have never kind of worked with lighting designers before, the one thing that we understand about glare is actually not so much the light coming off of the property, it's actually seeing the light source. It's actually seeing the light bulb or the source of illumination. With these particular products in place, we are able to make sure that, one, you look up at the light fixtures from the perimeter, if you're seven feet back from those, you will actually think that the light fixture is off, even when it's on doing its job. I have worked with a number of different state and national parks, and I can tell you right now, in those facilities, I don't think I've ever got lower than we have here. I really commend all of you on your efforts for sustainability and for light pollution reduction. But the other aspect of it, I think that is really important, is our ability to reduce energy consumption. And that was also a byproduct of having the design the way we have in place right now. So, overall, I think that, I'm actually quite amazed that CarMax has gone to the level that they have to make sure that we meet, to meet your code. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak on behalf of this project, please come up to the microphone, state name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, my name is Frank Rettle. I'm the project manager for Washington Square Properties, which owns the property directly south of the proposed CarMax. And we're also here on behalf of Lawrence Farms. Kim Lawrence is with me this evening, she's one of the owners of Lawrence Farms. We've submitted some letters. We understand that this is a permitted use, we're not trying to kill the project. Our concern is the effect on our property from this development. And we've submitted a letter from Matt Rudikoff, Al Roberts, and myself. And I'd like to just make reference to those letters and incorporate those letters and contents in my presentation. We did raise the issue of water. There's no municipal water in this area, everybody's on wells. They're going to have a car wash there. The FEIF, FEAF, guesses or proposes that they're going to use about 700 gallons of water a day. I don't know how that was computed. We're worried about the excessive car washes on the property. This is not a seasonal use as the nursery was, this is going to be used all year long. We think that there should be some monitoring of our area wells to make sure that there's not going to be any impact on them. Lighting, I'm not a light expert. However, it seems to me, and I submit this, it's just common sense, once the light is... My guess is the foot candles are determined by nothing underneath the lights except blacktop. You're going to have cars, you're going to have chrome, windshield, high-gloss paint. There's going to be reflection off those cars, and I don't know what effect, if any, that will have on the foot candles for the lighting plan that's before you. Landscaping, CarMax has gone through great efforts to propose beautiful landscaping in the front and the rear of the property, but nothing along our side. And I think they proposed a couple of trees, and I think that should be addressed. Lastly, CarMax is asking for waivers, the waiver of the lighting. In essence, they're asking for a variance. Now, the planning board does have the discretion to grant waivers, but unfortunately, the code doesn't set forth any criteria that the board should look at in granting the waivers. We submit that maybe the board should also look at the five criteria as if they were going for an area variance. Lastly, we think the public hearing should be kept open to allow CarMax to respond to these comments and to other comments that the board members may have or other members of the general public, so that we can come back and take a look at things again. That's it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak or has concerns regarding the project?
My name is Nancy, I live directly behind.
What's the address? What's your address?
36 Osborne Hill Road.
All right, thank you.
So I'm right behind Plant Depot.
You're right behind this project.
Right, and... We weren't included in any of these meetings. So what good does it do for us now to say something when you've already all made your minds up? I've lived where I live for 52 years. I've raised my child there as a single parent, my husband left. I've lived there when the water would come out as a trickle out of the shower and I had to get washed. It's only the past five years that we've had reasonable water pressure. And when I went to my granddaughter's in Florida, I found out I don't. I was like in another world. We don't have good water pressure, and I don't know if this will affect it or not. On top of that, we don't have good water quality. None of us drink the water there. I mean, it's a big deal. Also, for... Yeah, I've worked all my life to have the home that I have. And if the property value is decreased, that's... Not good for everybody, but I'm right on Osborne Hill Road, right directly behind it. And the tractor store, or whatever it is, down there, apparently they asked for fencing. Why cannot we get the white fencing so that we don't have to look at it regardless of trees? There's trees there now, I can see everything going on in there. So why can't we have white fencing? Including the other gentleman who was just speaking. And, you know, everybody here that's gotten up, they've talked about, well, they're wonderful credentials, and they know this and they know that, and they've been planning this and they've been planning that, all so wonderful. We haven't been included, and I just don't think it's right. I've lived in Wappinger's my whole life. And I don't have any kind of say, along with the people that live in the same area as me. And the traffic that's there now is not good at all. You've got the trucks coming down now because they don't want to use Fishkill Main Street. And you've got the other trucks and cars coming around that speed off there like speed demons, and it sounds like a... and it sounds like a, I don't know what you call it, a racetrack. Buses stop there. I've seen, and I don't look out my windows, but I just happen to be at the sink and I see a bus will stop, you have a knoll like this going a little bit further south, or whatever it is, and cars will pass the buses right there and go up over that knoll. What if somebody else is coming? And then, if they're not frustrated now, they will be then. And then if anything happens, also Fishkill diverts everything down Osborne Hill Road. So I, I don't know, everybody might think this is a great idea. I don't, unless there's at least some type of things to help. And some trees is not going to be the answer, and if tractor company could get it, why can't we get fencing that we can't see all the goings on in there and the landscape around it, at least? And this other part, I don't know, the house sits right next to it, on the other side, they just built a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful addition onto their home, and now they're going to have to look at that? I'm just saying, I'm very annoyed. I know that nothing's right in this country anymore, but...
Okay, now we've heard your comments. Thanks. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mrs. Dela Cruz, my husband and I own the house at 28 Osborne Hill Road, and that is at the T section coming on Smithtown and Osborne. This is our house right there, at the top of that T. There, my main concern, having children and grandchildren, is the traffic. We already have trucks after six o'clock, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, racing down Osborne to get back to the Durant tent rental, that's at the end of Osborne Hill Road, right at where it meets Route 9. There's no stop sign there. The only stop sign that prevents cars from directly hitting our house or slowing down is the one that's when you're coming west from Smithtown and hitting Osborne. There's nothing else there to control any kind of traffic or trucks or anything at all hours. My neighbor Nancy mentioned the race cars, that happened, I mean, it's, I could keep going on that, but my concern is, is what's being done to control or somewhat thwart that, that traffic and the racing. Also, none of my other neighbors brought this up because no one else deals with it, but my house faces south. In order for me to get my mail, I am playing a game with my life. Why? Because my mailbox is across the street. It's at the corner of Smithtown and Osborne, and that is where the back of the property, CarMax is saying that they want to put a chain link fence and some, that's not, it's, I still have to go there every day. We have children who can never tell anyone, can tell stories of going to get their mail for their family, because my husband would not allow me to let any of the kids cross the road. I play roulette with my life. Every single day I cross to get my mailbox, to get my, to get to my mailbox, which is across the road. No one else deals with that except us. So I want to know what can be done about that. Water was brought up, because we all have wells. I want to know how that's going to impact my house, my family, my well, because my well is right in front of my house. It's, it's, you know, you can see the property from there, our view, I want to know about that. I want to know, the water pressure, my neighbor mentioned that, the quality, the water isn't great, I can't imagine what it's going to be like with chemicals and wastewater coming out from there. I saw something about a chain link fence, and I'm going to mention that again, because when we bought the house, it was over, we're there over 10 years now, it was beautiful when Plant Depot had all their, you know, plants and trees and everything out, and I can't imagine now walking outside and looking at a view, and that is my view, because again, my house doesn't face Osborne Hill Road, our house faces south, so when you walk out my front door, that's what you see. The entire CarMax, Plant Depot, whatever you want to call it, parking lot. So I really want to know how thick is the, there's already trees there, they said they'll keep the mature trees, I want to know how much more is going. So when I walk out of my home every morning, I don't have, or in the afternoon, or going to get my mail, I'm not seeing people or workers or employees behind the chain link fence. So a neighbor suggested something more solid, something that when I walk out, I'm not seeing the businesses, you know, happenings there, whether it's peeking through a fence or whatever, I just don't want to see it. So yeah, the key, the key, the key thing with me here is the mailbox, the water runoff, the traffic, that's number one for me, the traffic. I've had more than three cars land on my lawn from car accidents, okay? I just want to feel safe, I want my children to feel safe. I don't want my daughter-in-law to feel nervous when I'm outside playing with my grandson because he can run right into the road there. I don't want to deal with people double parking because they can't, I just, it, it's been hard, I just don't want it to be any harder. If we can fix the mailbox, if we can get it on my property, so I just have to walk out of my house to get the mail and not risk, you know, traffic coming from three ways, racing with no stop signs, I, I don't know how that's been like that for this long. And, you know, my water safety, so, thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else? Do we have any, any discussion regarding this right now?
I was just, I was looking at the plans, what kind of fencing is proposed in the rear right now? Is it just chain link or is it privacy?
Depends on what you mean by the rear.
The rear.
Well, a lot of that is proposed to be a wall, a masonry block wall. From, from my understanding, and you can clarify this, what you're looking at from Osborne Hill Road is the building, is the staging area, which is totally enclosed with a masonry block wall roughly five feet, six, six foot high?
That's architectural block, architectural block, or what kind of block was it?
From what I remember, I mean, it was, it's fairly basic.
Same, yeah, same as the building on the...
Yeah, it just looks like the building continues out.
Okay, so be a big ugly gray wall, yeah.
So yeah, you would see, you would see a couple of layers of landscaping, and then sort of working north to south, you would see the employee customer slash auto hauler lot, which is also landscaped. You would see the masonry block building, that would sort of give down to the six-foot wall, masonry block wall, that runs all the way down to the southern property line. And again, depending on what you're looking at, it's quite a bit of, of lawn between Osborne Hill Road and that wall.
That wall is that light brown on the side that faces...
Yes, that's what I was zooming in to, to show you there, was that the wall is the management building. And...
Do you know what the width of that would be at its most narrow, where the wall sort of L's out? This might be a better question for the engineer than...
Sorry, could you...
There's a section of the walled in area that L's out towards, what would that, the width of that be at its most narrow between Osborne Hill Road and...
Oh, that dimension, Karen, if you want to, but I did want to point out that, yes, you're correct, there would be the six-foot tall block wall screening that staging area. There's almost an acre of green space back there behind our site, and, and then mature landscaping on Osborne Hill Road. That would be maintained, and as I said earlier, it would also be enhanced, as we've talked about one of the previous meetings, those trees are, are taller and have visibility on the lower levels, so we're adding some lower trees and shrubs to fill in the gaps in that existing mature landscaping.
And, good evening, Karen Maginowski-Bowler Engineering for the record. And at its most narrow point from that wall to the property line, it's about 65 to 70 feet of green space, and then it only widens out from there.
She was saying that there's, from the road to where the wall is, is basically about 65 feet in there.
At the narrow point.
Yeah, at worst, yeah, so it's not right against the street.
There's nothing like that now.
They're going to tear down those there now.
But, can I still talk?
Yeah, if you want to come back up, I'll give you a couple of minutes.
It's still, if they do that, it's still the noise, all the action, the trucks, and all that stuff, and it's going to be close enough to where everything can be seen by the people who are there, that live there. My neighbor or other neighbors, that, you know, they just gave up on even talking, and why can't there, if the tractor company could do it, why can't we? It's still Wappingers. Why can't we put up a white, solid fence?
Where, at what location are you asking this fence to be put?
I'm sorry?
At what location? Because they're basically putting the same thing along the border in the back with the, with the block wall. So you're, if you're talking about putting a fence at the roadway?
Well, if you have Osborne Hill Road, and then you have land here, right now, there's walking space and then some higher trees that you can see through, and then a little more walking space, people walk, their dogs there all the time. But then there's a wire fence behind that, why can't we have a fence that you can't see through?
They do, they have a, they're putting a wall there.
They're putting a block.
I don't understand the block wall.
A block wall, a cement block wall, looking at like, it's actually looking at the building itself, it's a similar...
It'll match the building, it'll be where you want a fence, basically.
How tall is it?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Right.
Can't be any...
Yeah, I mean, no matter what, I mean, it's going to, it's going to block a lot of it, I mean, you can't go too much taller, I mean, it would be just the same thing as, you know, Tractor Supply, I mean, they put a six-foot fence up. That was, I think, the same thing that you're talking about.
Okay, why? I was just hearing shrubbery, shrubbery, trees, trees, shrubbery, shrubbery, so...
And they are putting, they are putting the shrubbery, the trees to fill in, to buffer it.
Yeah, they actually have more than Tractor Supply had for...
And this is not going to affect our water pressure, our water contents to our pump, because we don't have that much water.
Again, that's a, that's a Department of Health issue.
Well, it hasn't been Department of Health up until now.
Right, but the pressure, pressure has nothing to do with, with the water that's in the ground, it's dependent upon the equipment you have in your home. But quantity of water, you know, which could affect it, if you, if you're running out of water, then that's a health, you know, that's a, you know, the aquifer, there's not enough water in it, you know, to supply you, it's a little different. Have you discussed any of your water issues with the Department of Health in the past?
But nothing's ever been done in the 50-some years I've been there.
Have you done anything on your property? Have you, have you had to re-drill your well on your property?
I, well, it's not my well, it's the well for the homes in the park.
Okay.
Community well?
All right, so it's a community well?
Right.
Okay, which is, which is overseen by a Department of Health. They have to report to them every...
And originally, the park was made for five mobile homes, there's 10 in there now. So on and so forth, but, okay.
Okay.
Really, the, yeah, the screening thing is the only thing that we have control over.
Yeah, so screening, obviously the, the traffic issue, the speeding and things like that's out of our control, that's unfortunately, that falls onto the, the town board, they will have to make an agreement with the sheriff's office for more enforcement in the area.
The town board would be the ones that could put a stop sign up there, I know exactly who she's talking about.
Yeah, it's a combination, I believe that's Osborne's County Road, is that correct?
So that would have to be a...
County. The county would have to...
I mean, that, the stop sign, Smithtown Road that comes down to Osborne Hill Road, people don't stop there, they have no idea. I only go out in the back and stand on the porch for a few minutes, and I will see somebody every time, they have no idea, that car's come straight down there. There's other things that go on in that road, and, you know, you hear beeping, screeching, all that stuff, which is right in front of my neighbor's yard.
No, we understand, I mean, we understand the concern, but it's unfortunately...
And there's never anybody around.
Right, it's unfortunately, it's something that we have no control over.
Yeah, actually, you could talk to the county, and they'd be the ones, they'd probably
The other issue regarding the mailbox has nothing to do with the US Postal Service. That's pretty much all, most of the comments that were discussed. I guess the lighting, lighting on the original letter, landscaping on the side of Hudson Ribbons Fish, that would be something we need to probably discuss, or actually, it was formerly Hudson Ribbons Fish. Okay. All right. We'll have to discuss that at some point. Do we want to go through the planner and the engineers' notes on this at this point in time?
Yeah, and would we want to look at the screening on that other side?
Well, we can do, I think, I think that that needs to be addressed. Let's see, there is, we did, we did address the one on the residential parcel, we didn't address the other one, the commercial parcel.
Oda is the first thing there, right?
So the one, the other, for the, the piece there in the further south, that one butts the, the house, and then the other one that's, the other line coming from the corner of the property on Route 9 coming back, that's the one that butts Hudson Ribbons Fish property.
For clarification sake, is this the, we were talking about the southern...
Yeah, 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 this is the, that adjacent property there.
And I did want to point out, you know, the majority of that southern property line in the existing condition is some wetland area, some septic field. There is commercial development in front of the site, but a lot of... A lot of that shared property line there is developing to the secondary building, the water, excuse me, wetland area. Just wanted to put that in context as it's not really shown on this plan.
But that would be something that could get addressed. It's not that you can't plant things there.
We have our parking near the property line as, as the existing development does. I don't know if there's a whole lot of room there to put landscaping in. But I guess the point I was making with bringing that up is, you know, we're, there's nothing directly abutting that we're really screening from at that, for a lot of that.
It's only about halfway down on that side, on the southern side that really even needs the screening, right?
Yeah.
Because what, I was looking at the lighting plan and there's really not a lot of lighting coming back. There's like two poles, one like at the front side of Oda and one toward the backside and then there's nothing, nothing else that I don't even see from there, but. But yeah, it wouldn't take a lot to screen from, from that property.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, when we, when we touch on the. Touch on making sure we have all the comments to address from the planner and the engineer at this point. You know, we can kind of make a decision on where we're going here tonight. All right, so let's start with the, let's start with the planner and your comments.
So I put together a collection of comments. The, the biggest one I would say is in the curb cut used by the auto haulers to make that turning radius, you expanded that to forty-six feet. Our traffic engineers took a look at that and they're suggesting that, that the pavement beyond the standard width of curb cut, beyond the standard turning radius, be treated in another material. I mean, we have recommendations, we've done that work elsewhere. Typically, they'll use, you know, cobblestones or something like that, something that is of a different texture and of a different color to visually narrow that entrance. That wouldn't be an issue if that was, that was separate from the rest of the parking area and it was only to be used by auto haulers, it wouldn't be as big of an issue. But because they are both connected and there's nothing stopping customers from using that same one, we're concerned with people coming down Smithtown and being able to turn into the site much faster than they should be able to turn into the site. And obviously, you need to keep the width to allow the auto haulers to come out. So, yeah.
So you're proposing, the, the width of the drive could stay, you're looking for striping or, or some sort of material that, that could be rolled over if needed, but, but would visually make it appear a little more narrow.
Something that's designed to be used by a heavy truck every day, right? Functionally, you're keeping the same width at forty-six feet, but visually, either by color or texture and ideally by both, you're narrowing that down so that most people would not, you know, use the full width of that entrance.
Yeah, exactly what that looks like. I'm, I'm sure we could come up with, with something. We will be putting signage up to designate that, that drive as employee-controlled as well, if that would help alleviate some of that concern. But to your point, that's certain, I, I don't see any major objection to, to doing something like that.
Sure, and if, if you're open to suggestions, we've done it elsewhere with, in particular with roundabouts, traffic circles. We have a few examples if you're curious, but also I'm totally confident that you can come up with something.
Sure. Yeah, we can certainly address that.
That's, that's largely it for my memo. The rest of my memo is sort of keeping track of all of the issues that we, that have.
That we've already addressed.
Addressed and, and, you know, what the issue was originally and how it has been addressed.
All right, John?
Yeah, they've addressed the, the majority of our initial concerns through various changes they've made in the design. The comments that we have remaining are essentially carryovers from previous reviews, having to deal with the outside regulatory agency approvals that are still needed, providing details of, of the proposed concrete wall. And other than that, there's, you know, the health department approval, obviously, giving us descriptions of the utility easement that they're going to offer to the town, but that's, that's essentially it. There's, there's nothing of major concern left in our review.
Okay.
There was the topic that the, the board was discussing in the pre-meeting, the question of a sidewalk along Smithtown Road. We've looked at it elsewhere. I think that it, it would make sense particularly in the context of some of the traffic issues that some of the neighbors have brought up. I don't know if you, if you would like to address that now.
Yeah, well, we'll bring it up to the board. I mean, what is the, what does the board want to see? Because I know that was something that was just kind of discussed earlier tonight regarding the sidewalk.
There's a bus stop up there though, right?
The what?
There is a bus stop up there.
I'm not sure exactly where that is on that, in that area.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
It says Smithtown, okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be.
If we have, if we have a sidewalk there coming up Smithtown?
Yeah.
Then, you know, at least, you know, it helps them out, then, you know, somebody's walking up there to get on the bus, be nice to have a sidewalk there while we're doing all this work, you know? The addition of a sidewalk is not a big deal.
I agree.
In the general, in the big scope of it all.
Yeah, I agree.
Helps the people out a little bit, right?
Okay.
Bruce, can you just have them show the signage that they're proposing so that the board can see it?
Yeah, we can go through that too, as well. All right, so what's, what's the board, so obviously guys are, everybody's in favor of sidewalk?
Yep.
Yes. We, I guess, wanted to address the issue of the sidewalk.
Good evening again. I know this is the first time the sidewalk is coming up on Smithtown Road. As you can see, the right-of-way there almost doesn't exist. Basically, the road essentially comes to the property line and then entering onto our property, we are maintaining that landscape strip, which is a proposed stormwater easement through the property.
You're talking about west of the westernmost curb cut, that area?
Yes, so there's, yeah, it's further down.
So.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, this, yeah, this and then all along this furniture here is an easement all the way to get to Route Nine.
That's correct. Essentially, the road comes to the property line. There's really no green space in the right-of-way.
Any thoughts?
I mean, the, the alternative to using the right-of-way or building the sidewalk would be to look for an easement for the construction of the sidewalk in the future, which would come on to the property, the applicant's property. I mean, when there is right-of-way available, we use the right-of-way and when there isn't, we look for easements onto the property. It would, it would alter the geometry. Bringing everything back into the property would significantly alter the geometry of the plan that we have developed over the last year.
Yeah, just, I think that the, I don't know, there might be issues at this point in the game, that's all. I mean, the easement, I mean, you're gonna get a partial easement to put part of the sidewalk in there, you know, on their property and the rest would have to go into town, you know, into the right-of-way.
Yeah.
You know, and again, it's gonna be something that's gonna be, have to be built out by, you know, the town at some point in the future. So the question is, is there, you know, what's the reality of this at the end of the day? Will it fit or won't it fit?
Won't it?
It would be a very tight fit and we would lose, we would bring everything back into the site or we would lose a lot of landscaping along the front. And you said the easement that you're proposing along there is for drainage or, yeah, that's the drainage easement that you're discussing?
Yes.
Right, so that's where.
It would be complicated. It would be a complicated ask. Not that it is impossible or undoable, but it would be a complicated ask. It's a very narrow road. There isn't much shoulder on either side, which is, is a double-edged sword in that degree where, you know, you have not that much room to work with, but also there's no shoulder for people to walk along going to the bus stop. So it is, it's, what?
It's never been a shoulder.
No, it's, and.
Not in fifty-one years, it's never been a shoulder on that road. There's never been room on that road, ever.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, becomes the reality of it at the end of the day, is where we're gonna be.
It's a big ask.
Right, you know, because if anything, at the end of the day, I mean, it's, it's gonna be tough to, if it's tough to squeeze out in there.
If it don't fit, it don't fit. If it fits, we fit.
Well, I guess my question, maybe this is a good question for John, what about the drainage easement? Would, would the existence of the drainage easement there preclude the existence of a, of a sidewalk on top of it? I mean hypothetically, any work in that easement for drainage would disturb the sidewalk and they'd have to repair it and put it back?
Right. Not necessarily, but I would, I would have to, to look at it on paper to understand it better. Right.
It's a matter, matter of which, what's, what's gonna be the best benefit at the end of the day.
And just as a reminder to, to reroute the drainage in the easement that we have, there are a series of catch basins along the whole way there.
And a number of utility poles along that same front.
They have to come up to the microphone because it.
They need to be mindful. Unless you live there, you have no idea how many people are walking on that street taking their lives in their hands. And that's always, so many people are going out to catch the community bus all hours of the day and night. And they're taking their lives.
And we're aware of that. That's why it was brought up.
I mean, I, I think that it should be explored and revisited at the next meeting. I don't want to.
That's, that small stretch could be turned into a one-way. You'd only leave people to go out.
And that's not, that's not for us.
Oh, I'm just saying.
That's not for us to make that determination.
Well, not us, but I'm just saying, it's an option that, that just make it a one-way, make the road smaller, you got all the room in the world, that's it.
I think the sidewalk issue has to be revisited, especially the fact that she brought up a danger issue and she brought up the fact, which gave clarification to me, that there's a lot of people that go through there.
Yeah.
Because me and Lou were just talking.
And the bus stop.
How many people go through there a day? Maybe one or two? No, lots of people, she just said it.
And the bus stop's right there.
It has to be explored.
I agree. I, I think it should be explored, but I, I think that it needs to be revisited at the next meeting. I think that we're committing a lot of time. I would like to ask them to look at it though and see what that feasibility is, yeah.
But they're coming from somewhere, the sidewalk on Osborn.
Okay, so I mean, I mean, that's something that you guys could kind of just take a look at and get back to us with some.
Yeah, the, the existing kind of physical constraints of, of the site do make that, I think, just, obviously, it's the first time we're hearing about it, but just in a quick.
Well, it's also, it's also the first that's been brought to our attention as well. Tonight was the, you know, it wasn't really discussed in the past only because there's nothing in that area. You know, apparently, they said it was brought to our attention, I guess. The planner also reached out to the county and they kind of, you know, they were kind of pushing a little bit towards it as well. You know, just, it was just not one of the normal areas that they usually push for sidewalks, let's put it that way.
Yeah, it, it appears there's no other sidewalks in the area, is that, is that correct?
There's other projects they've, they've pushed in the past, but it just, you know, whether or not they've, they've been established or not, but, you know, at some point, you know, if all these developments, you know, if all these properties get redeveloped, eventually there will be, you know, corridor, you know, walking corridor from, you know, from your site, you know, probably all the way up to, you know, the, the village of Wappingers and, in the grand scheme of things over time.
Yeah, I mean, I think on, on Route Nine, there's, there's room, it appears, unless Karen is speaking out of turn, but just on Smithtown Road there, it, it, it's very, very tight with the existing geometry, it appears, and with the drainage easement and then the other things we're discussing and, you know, with the site kind of getting pushed forward because we're trying to provide that, that rear buffer and, and that, provide that public utility or the sanitary sewer easement for the future expansion, you know, it's, it's all kind of tight up front and so I think that it would be very difficult for us to accommodate on, on initial review.
Well, that's what he said. He said geometry, but not impossible.
Okay, that's why we have a public hearing.
Right, so it's, so at this point, I mean, it's, it's something that possibly you can work this out with the, you know, with the town engineer a little bit offline, because I think that we're.
So what I think would be helpful for the board would be detail showing the edge of pavement, any proposed drainage, and then, you know, where the, where the parking is to be, supposed to be. I'm looking at the site layout plan C three oh one and it's kind of, it's hard to tell the edge of pavement from this.
Yeah, you can't see it. Look at that too.
So, I mean, I think that, I mean, we can see, you know, you can see the property line. At least toward the, you know.
The curb radius makes me think that there is a little bit of, but that depends on how it is from and.
Right, and I mean, up toward Route Nine, not on Route Nine, but on Smithtown Road, you know, it's unclear there. But, you know, there's proposed catch basins that are located there, so, and.
Yeah, but could they be shifted? I'm not sure.
Okay, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna come up to a conclusion on this tonight. You wanna, no, you wanna, you guys want to adjourn this to another night, certain?
Yeah.
So at this point, it looks like we're gonna adjourn the public hearing to another date. While we're here, I guess what would be the next? While we're here, I guess what would be the next available dates that we can move this to? Would be May first? The first?
Yep, May first would be great.
May first, okay. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to May the first.
So move.
I'll second that. Motion made, say it, on favor?
Aye.
May opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Chair. May I also just ask, in the event that we are able to respond to and address the board's comments and the comments that we heard tonight satisfactorily at the next meeting, and we're in a position to be able to close the public hearing at that time, would the board contemplate also having a resolution available for the board to act upon in the event the board is ready to move forward to that step? Obviously, it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't commit you to acting upon the resolution on that night, but it would give you the opportunity to do so.
Excuse me, if you're gonna talk, can you go out in the hallway? Thank you. I, I'm still concerned about the traffic on Smithtown, that small stretch of Smithtown. I still haven't seen anything that shows us what's gonna happen to the traffic and what kind of impact it's gonna have there. I'm, I'm visualizing these car carriers, if they come off Osborne, I don't know how they're gonna turn in it without going into the other lane of traffic on Smithtown. My concern also is if they turn left from Route nine and at certain points of the day, this is very well-traveled road and, and traffic backs up, if that entrance is closed, we're gonna have a car carrier there. And then it's gonna stack up, you know, the westbound traffic's gonna stack up to Route nine and, uh, I have concerns about that. And I haven't seen anything that has shown me anything different than what I see.
Sure, so we did submit the, the turning movement, um...
That's inside the site, right?
Yep, and we're, we're happy to, to provide some additional information for you on that.
Right, I'm just worried about that short stretch of Smithtown. I don't wanna put a problem area into the town.
So, to speak to the traffic specifically for Smithtown, since that seems like the concern, the car carriers would be coming from Route nine, and we did look at traffic data, um, that is there, so I apologize if I'm repeating myself. But out of the three roads, Route nine, Smithtown, and Osborne Hill, Smithtown is actually the less traveled of the three per DOT data with about thirty-six hundred vehicles per day, which is well under either of the traffic on those roads. We also did, um, count the, the gaps within the traffic, and in the peak hour, there was found to have a fifteen second gap, which is an adequate gap, um, for that stretch of road with those access points that are there.
Is that at peak?
At peak, correct. With the use itself, um, it's pretty low intensity from a traffic standpoint. Just to put it into a bit of comparison and perspective, we have a large parcel here, it's seven and a half acres, with one small building and a business that's selling something that's quite a big purchase. So, an auto dealership is not like a coffee shop where people are getting one cup of coffee every minute and those are your vehicle trips. That would be very intense. And the intensity here could even be twice that with a second fast food or coffee shop because you could subdivide it and fit two compliant lots that are there. So I think the use itself is well under the intensity of other things that it could be with trip generation. It's, it's very low for the use because people aren't buying a thirty thousand dollar car every five minutes.
But you have a study.
We have done some data, yes.
Can you submit it?
We can.
Thank you.
I guess what, what would be, I think also most helpful based on what Mr. Frano's concern is, is what the stack, maximum stack eastbound on Smithtown Road at the peak hours. Cause the question would be, how far does that, the stacking go back?
Yeah.
On the site, you know, the, the car carrier driveway is the one that's furthest west. So if you can demonstrate that, you know, the, the stack at the peak hours does not block the driveway, I think that satisfies the concern. And if it doesn't, one of the things that the board could look at is hours, restricting hours of deliveries onto the site with a car carrier.
Could have, you also could have a sign saying not to block, not to block the drive?
That too, yep.
We could add signage.
Something where you, you know, don't block.
Right.
Yeah, they gotta, they gotta read the sign and then do it.
Well, I mean, what, what...
We had the same thing with Gasland, if you remember, taking that left-hand turn out of Gasland and the proposal of, well, we'll paint a box and we'll put up a sign that says, don't make this left-hand turn at these times. And everybody balked at it, cause nobody's gonna do that.
Look at the chase and the gas stations around the corner. Turn where they're not supposed to.
Yeah.
And, and if I may, as far as Smithtown Road goes, so we could have access, if we were allowed, on Route nine, on Osborne Hill, but we went with the less intense road to help mitigate any traffic concerns. We're closing the curb cut on Route nine, we're closing the curb cut on Osborne Hill, we're keeping that curb cut away from our residential neighbors and off of Route nine where you could create a slowdown, so I think we've, and we've also closed the curb cut proposed closest to the intersection. So I think we've taken this back and proposed the most effective and efficient curb cuts that are there to help mitigate those issues and, and help elongate that stack.
So provide that for, I guess, don't be provided for next meeting, I guess, whatever data, I guess he's looking for, so. All right, so with that, any other questions or concerns we need to bring up before we get back to the journey in the public hearing?
No, I think we're good.
There was also a question regarding a proposed resolution. Does the drafter, does the planner draft a proposed resolution? Are there any thoughts on that?
We wanna see what they can figure out with the sidewalk and stuff first before we do that.
Yeah.
All right, if that's what you want, all right, so.
They'd real...
We have on a, so on the table right now is we have to adjourn, adjourn the public hearing to May the first.
Good.
So, need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. See you on the first. A bunch of other items to get through here tonight. Okay, so our next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for site plan and special use permit for Myers Corners Solar Farm. Entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So move.
Okay, motion's made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, uh, my name is Kyle McAdam, I'm representing Lightstar Renewables, uh, standing in for Sam Bailey who regrettably can't be here this evening, um, as he and his wife just welcomed their first baby, um, this past Saturday, I think it was. So again, my name is Kyle McAdam, I'm here with some folks from Lightstar, Olivia Pato and Cecilia Stevens, as well as Jason Dickey from TRC, and we've got Jacob Black over here, who's our agriculture consultant. So this evening, we're proposing a two point nine megawatt DC, two point one megawatt AC, uh, solar and agrivoltaic, uh, array at one eighty-nine Myers Corners Road. This will be over eleven acres in the fenced area. It will combine, uh, solar power generation with agriculture. Our landowners, Sean and Brian Thompson, are going to be the folks who are managing the agricultural component of this project. At this time, their plan is to grow lavender, blueberries, strawberries, tomatoes, and potentially onions. I've heard there's an onion shortage, uh, so Sean told me a couple of weeks ago that could be potentially onions as well. For those that don't know, agrivoltaics are fairly new, um, use case here, um, to combine agriculture and solar. They're being done, uh, projects like this are being done all over the world, particularly in Europe and Japan. So the idea here is that, um, the panels are a little bit, you know, further spaced out. Crops are grown in between, underneath, um, or on the perimeter of the panels. Some certain crops, you know, do really well underneath panels where they have, um, additional shading. If the sun is too hot, um, if they don't need as much sun during the day, um, you know, there's a lot of potential opportunity here, um, to grow a variety of crops, as I, you know, explained, um, that the Thompsons are planning on doing. So, um, this project is, uh, located in R A D zoning. We were last before the planning board on March twentieth, um, to receive approval for tree clearing, uh, before the thirty-first, in order to mitigate impacts to the Indiana bat. We did receive approval for that tree clearing, um, and it has been completed at this time. So at this point, uh, we have, like I said, our engineering consultant, Jason Dickey, as well as our agrivoltaic consultant, Jacob Black, to answer any questions for the public and, you know, get folks a little bit more comfortable with agrivoltaics as a concept because we do realize that it is a new use, um, and we wanna do our best to explain it. So, thank you very much. If you can just turn this around here so folks can see.
With that said, I'll open up the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here that has any wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Okay. All right, seeing none. All right, well, we, um, discuss, I guess, whatever open-ended issues we have with, uh, our professional staff at this time.
So I have a few, uh, brief, uh, little ones, um, they're narrative responding to my previous memo, itemizing the special permit considerations that they need to comply with. Looks like they complied with all of those. One of them regard, uh, uh, one of them was about the surface area of the collective solar panels. Um, you gave me an answer on that. If you could add, um, a, a note to the front of the plan, somewhere near the bulk table, something like, you know, special permit, you could cite the special permit.
Sure.
And show those calculations, right, the area of each panel multiplied by, et cetera. A few small notes on the landscaping plan, um, I've been told that the cedar trees proposed in the front were gonna be removed. The landscaping plan that I reviewed still had a species of cedar trees. I was curious if that was a, a holdout and that's to be removed, or if this is a new species of cedar that's being proposed, but...
Yeah, we do plan on removing the, the red cedars. Um, we understand that they do have some agricultural impacts. Sean Thompson, the landowner, actually is a certified arborist, um, so he'll be able to work with us to select an alternative, uh, native species that fulfills the same requirements as the red cedars, um, in terms of visual...
Yeah, that's perfect, exactly. Uh, I also gave you a note that I would love, uh, to be added to your landscaping plan and it says that what's being shown here is going to be maintained in good health during the service life of this project. And then finally, um, one of the answers regarding the east property line, um, said that it was to be maintained in its current condition using the existing mature vegetation. A, a similar area, although it is scaled way out, so it's, it's, it's possible that you're still maintaining that screening, uh, but a similar area is highlighted for clearing and grubbing. So if you can take another look at that and, um, look at that, if it's been cleared, we may need to look at landscaping along that property line. And if you have maintained a tree line along the property line, should be fine. But if you can describe, um, what the existing condition of that property line screening.
Yeah, we'll definitely take another look at that.
Thank you. That's it for me. John, you got anything?
Well, we, we're still in the process of reviewing the, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan. But based on what they submitted last week, it appears that they have addressed the majority of, of our concerns. Once the, the SWIP review is done, we'll issue an updated comment letter. One of the previous concerns we had, it appears they've addressed, um, it had to do with some of the arrays that were located at the north end of the site. It appeared they were on some, you know, relatively steep slopes, but they revised the grading in that area so that it, it's, um, I believe a max of ten percent, which would really mitigate what our concern was there. Other than that, we didn't really have anything, um, to... Like I said, as long as their, their SWIP is in good shape, most of our comments should be, um, completed.
Okay, so we're pretty well along then with the, the process on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, Jim, anything with the, I know there's requirements in there for decommissioning, everything is...
Yeah, they submitted a decommissioning plan with, um, some associated costs. You know, one of the things here, um, you know, most of the costs are for the removal of the, um, the equipment. The site restoration here is pretty easy in that, um, it's basically, you know, it's farmland, so, it, it is just grading, you know, the, the areas where the panels are received, were removed and seeding it with, you know, whatever, uh, crop is being, you know, used, so, um, they have a, a proposed decommissioning total of eighty-one thousand, which is based on, you know, the demolition cost less the salvage credit. And, um, you know, one of the things that, um...
Yeah, that was my concern, was the salvage credits.
Yeah, um, so, we can look at that. One of the things I know in other municipalities where I, where, that I represent, we've gone to, um, a provision where you update the, there's a, there's a, an obligation for the property owner to up, the operator to up, update the costs, you know, on a five-year basis, so, um, which might make sense. You know, as, you know, it's, it's hard to predict, you know, thirty years, thirty years from now.
Right, right, that's based, that's right, it's based upon, if the salvage credit's based upon a commodity at the time, you know, the commodity may be this today, but
Correct.
Three to five years, that could be, you know, that could be lesser, it could be more, we don't know.
As well as the decommissioning costs themselves too, so, you know.
Right, correct.
You know, if we had, you know, look at Route nine D solar, you know, what we probably estimated at that time when, when that was proposed, you know, I would imagine the, the costs, you know, are, you know, substantially higher than that was approved, but...
Correct.
You know, the other thing though is that it is a lien against the property and should it not be done, the town has the ability to go in and remove it and charge back whatever costs are not recouped against the property. So that's another provision that's in the code.
Any board members have any questions regarding?
I have a question. When you, when you collect the power, what do you do with it?
So this is a community solar project, um, so the, it's connected to the distribution grid. A lot of, you know, the larger projects that are over tens or even hundreds of acres, um, those connect to the transmission grid. Um, and I know here, specifically in upstate New York, there's been concern among certain communities that these large-scale transmission projects are coming in, the power's going down to the city and the, the communities aren't able to benefit from it. This type of project here, community solar, is injected right into the distribution grid. So the community will realize the benefits. This is a two-megawatt project, like I said, um, so it'll provide enough energy to power between three hundred and sixty and four hundred homes in the community.
So there's no storage capability onsite?
No, we do not have a battery at this time, no.
So that's like a street in Wappinger.
What?
Like one development.
Okay.
And the way, the way these community solar programs work, theoretically, the, the operator can contract with anybody in the Central Hudson service area. So it's not just limited to the town, it would be, you know, theoretically, any Central Hudson customer. That's the way the...
They send things out in the mail already.
Yeah. So that's the way the Public Service Commission has, has operated these. And one of the things that they are required, and I don't know if, it's, I believe it's been submitted, is, they need a, an approval from Central Hudson to connect. One of the things that Central Hudson will look at is, um, what the... that Central Hudson will look at is what the capacity is in the line on Myers Corners Road that they would, you know, connect into. So, and I looked at the, it's called the Distributed Electric, I forgot it. The abbreviation is D E R.
Distributed Energy Resource.
Energy Resources, there you go. And so, you know, Central Hudson, for the lot at Myers Corners, Central Hudson indicates it has enough capacities to supply to, or to take to...
Take more power on at that point.
Two, yeah, two megawatts.
And what happens with what you produce on the farm portion of it?
Yeah, so, like I said, lavender, blueberries, strawberries, tomatoes at this point. That'll be sold by the Thompsons at, you know, local farmers markets, CSAs. I'm not sure exactly what their plans are for this, but it will be sold in the, in the local community.
The last time he was here, he mentioned working with local grocery stores, but I'm sure that that will change year to year depending on what he grows and how the market...
Yeah, I also asked him about the lavender that he was going to be distributing, if he had any intentions in selling it to farm to make oil, and he said perhaps.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah.
No other questions for the applicant?
This is our engineer, Jason, from T R C. He just has a question about the...
I'm a lowly biologist, not an engineer, but, thanks.
Okay.
I just have a question about the wetland permit. We do intend to submit an application for that. The mechanics of the wetland permit application form ask for so many copies, hard copies of the plan. We've already provided those, just want clarification that maybe that's not necessary. Also showing the boulders along...
By marking the boundaries.
Yeah, in this case, I suppose we, we would mark that boundary as where, what the limits of disturbance, what we're proposing those to be. We avoid the wetlands, but we'll be encroaching into that upland buffer area.
Yeah. Yeah, you just raised a good question regarding that, which we should probably have some discussion on because some of these, these areas are going to be within the middle of the, the middle of the site, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, it's currently proposed.
So, putting a, putting a five-foot boulder in the middle of everything, you know, every, you know, whatever it is, every thirty feet or so might be, might not be the best idea.
Might complicate the movement of equipment.
Yeah.
I was just, I was talking to Barbara about this. In the past, we've, we've always done this on residential properties. There has been a few commercial properties where we haven't. Typically though, that's because we have some other demarcation. There's a guardrail between the parking lot and the buffer or something like that.
Yeah.
We've never had an instance where it's, it's also an active farm field.
It's almost, it's, it's almost as if it was like a commercial property with a parking lot as well, where you may encroach a little bit in the parking lot. It's not like, you know, five foot into the parking lot, we stack up boulders and say, hey, this is...
Yeah, I mean, I think the...
This is the line.
The purpose for it, the concern is so that people don't go put a shed up in their backyard in the wetland buffer or something like that.
Right, for the intent of marking it, the substitution of putting some type of monuments in, let's say, you know, you know, like a concrete monument or something like that as opposed to a, you know, the boulder?
Or maybe just two signs that just say beginning of wetland boundary, something that doesn't get in their way, but we can check to see that they're not, you know.
Well, I, I mean, the intent is to prevent encroach, further encroachment into the buffer.
Right.
So, here, you know, the, the, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the array is going to be fenced.
Yes, the array, yes.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I don't think you're going to see any kind of encroachment outside of the fence. And then, I believe agricultural activities are exempt under our wetlands law, so...
I also believe that they would all be within the fenced area as, as being proposed.
Right. But I mean, even outside, you know, regular, you know, a farmer is allowed to, to, to raise crops in the buffer.
Right, he's allowed to encroach it anyway. So, it's really, and at this point, it's basically a moot issue.
Yeah.
So, we're, so basically just, you know, really nothing more than, I guess, marking the map at this point.
Well, yeah, and I think that the fence will functionally and visually be...
Right.
You know, any area within the buffer that is to be disturbed will be fenced in, in perpetuity.
Oh, so they're going to put a fence in? Because we were there, there was no fence.
Yeah, no, no, no. It was always a fence around the whole array. There was always a fence being put in, right. And whatever activities they're going to have are only going to be within the confines of the fence.
Comes around that green bolt.
Fence you can't see through, right?
No, they have screening and then the fence.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, all right. So, at this point, we're still, we're still awaiting wetland permit then? Wetland disturbance permit?
Well, that you just have to submit and we'll circulate it. So, that's, that's an easy one.
Yeah, and we're not waiting on, on any seeker elements. That's all been concluded. So, they've, they've satisfied their special permit requirements and their site plan requirements. I'm looking for clarification on a few items, but I don't think it's showstoppers, but they, they will be important, right? A little bit more detail on some vital elements of screening. But that, that concludes my review. Once those elements have been addressed...
Once they've been submitted.
Yeah.
All right, complete. Lee and John?
Well, the, the, the road has a robust landscaping plan. They're, they're making a change in terms of, they're, they're setting the cedar trees out for something else, yet to be determined. What I'm curious about is there's a section of property line to the orchard that's north of this, northeast of this, yeah, along that. They said that they were going to use the existing vegetation for screening. They're also doing some tree clearing there. And so, I'm looking for clarification on, you know, to what degree were those trees cleared? Is there existing vegetation there for screening? And if not, let's talk about the screening plan.
Yeah, screening is important in this project.
Yeah, there's not anything existing really there.
But this is, this one would be in the back between this and another agricultural field to the east of it.
If I may, on that issue, because we have discussed this prior, but just to make sure, I guess to recalibrate everybody, this is all orchard. I suppose the nearest residents would be pretty far and come off the mat. And really, old Myers Road isn't giving any, it's not giving much, if any, viewpoint of this. This adjacent, this neighboring landowner is supportive of this project. Our understanding is that there's no concern about, you know, and I'm not sure if this has been, that it's entirely removed, what's within the property line.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it was super scaled out and there's some clearing there. So, I think that in a narrative, if you can describe what clearing has been done back there and if there is still vegetation on that property line, how thick it is or to what age or maturity it is, I think that would totally address that, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's the chance, and I don't know, there's the chance that there's, there's nothing standing. You just see clear in the orchard.
In which case, we might look at putting in a tree line, putting in screening there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is nothing standing. It's right near my house.
It's already been cleared out.
It's already been felt. It's not cleared out. The tree's falling. They're all laying in stacks.
Right, so there's nothing left standing in that area?
Correct.
Okay, going up the side.
I mean, we have, you know, but we have proposed landscaping for the objective of screening, but it's to screen usually.
Right, screening for the road, for the road itself.
The adjacent landowner is really okay with it. I mean, if, if it's the board's requirement that we do something there, then we'll try to look that in. I don't, I just want to make the case that this...
Right, yeah.
It may not be necessary.
It may not be necessary. I'm just curious what that is, what that is. The way the special permit is written, it lays preference to existing vegetation, if at all possible. If it's not available, it has provisions for the planning board to request additional screening, either through vegetation, fencing, berms. I mean, there's, there's possibilities, should the planning board deem it necessary, to, to screen that property line. But we can, we can address that at the next meeting when we've got answers to...
They're, they're claiming that the adjacent property owner is supporting the project. If they provided evidence from the adjacent property owner that he doesn't care if there's no screening there, would that satisfy?
Uh, I mean, it would, it, it would contribute to your deliberation on whether...
Yeah, today, right. You know, again, today you have a public hearing on the project and nobody, nobody came to speak, so...
Yeah.
I mean, the visual aspect, I get the rest of it. I mean, that, you know, there is, it is going to be open. And no matter how much you put around it, you're still going to see it at some point somehow.
That's in the back though, right, from the road?
Yeah, it's a back away from the road is where it's open.
And then it'll be from, from the road.
Yeah.
The most important...
Yeah, trying to, trying to screen it at the road frontage is one thing, but then as you're going back. Now, and again, no matter where you are, going back towards the east on Myers Corner, remember, you're going to be at a higher elevation coming down the hill.
Yeah.
So, even with a, even with a row of trees going up that one side, you're still going to look over the top, you know, whatever's planted there. And you'll still see those panels. And you're still going to, there's still going to be a lot to see there. But, but there's no neighboring, again, I think John's correct, if the, the neighboring property owner doesn't have an issue with it, I don't think there's much that we really should be looking at in terms of it at this point.
I think that if you can come back with some description of, of what's there after tree clearing and a, a, a letter or an email from that neighbor, I think that with those pieces of information at that time, we can decide whether or not we need additional screening there.
I'll leave it up to, I mean, with the rest of the board, I mean, what's your feeling on it?
I like trees.
Yeah, I'd like this to be screened as much as possible.
I'm sorry. I like to be screened as much as possible, too.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, just to add, the trees there, if there's not a substantive, it's a, it's tree of heaven. There's, I think there's some sumac on the other side. It's like early successional, just it's...
Yeah, I don't like sumac. I don't really like that, but...
Yeah, so it's...
What's there, what's there now?
So, you don't want to propose replacing what's there currently?
Yeah, it's all junk and locusts and all that crap around there now.
When, when, when we quantified the number of trees on the site, you have to decide what's a tree. We chose four inches diameter at breast height, so it's not...
We were there, we did the site.
Sure, you've seen, that's right.
Yeah.
This is a lot of spunk stuff, but I just, yeah, I like trees too, but...
Well, I mean, I just...
Conventionally, he's almost...
You know, living here your whole life, when you come down that road and you see panels, I'd rather see as much buffer as possible, as I'm sure the rest of the town probably would too. I don't know, can't really speak for them, but...
All right. So, with that, I mean, obviously, so what is, what's the consensus of the board? Do you want to see screening then or some type of, some kind of, some to buffer and break it up a little bit?
Yeah, buffer screening.
Okay. All right. So, if you could propose something, you know, for that.
Okay. Take a look.
Yeah.
That, that simplifies things then. Now, we're not really waiting for outstanding information to come in.
Right. So, so we, we've taken out the big, the big piece of the puzzle here at this point.
The, the next steps would be to consider resolution.
So, if we, so with the minimal amount of stuff that's left at this point, that has bore feel about having the proposal drafted for resolution at this point?
So, if I, if I may, one, one thing with respect to screening. So, the provision for ground mounted solar refers to the buffer of two forty dash twenty-five B, which is the screening requirements between multifamily or commercial and residential properties. And it says that the, the evergreen planting of such tight height spacing and arrangement as in the judgment of the planning board will effectively screen the activity of the lot from the neighboring residential area. Non-evergreen planting may be included to supplement evergreen planting, but not to take its place. Shall be at least twenty feet in weight with a wall or fence of location, height, design and materials approved by the planning board may be substituted for the planting and buffer area. And where the existing topography and/or landscaping provides adequate screening, the planning board may modify the planting and/or buffer area requirements. So, the code is basically calling for a twenty-foot wide landscaped area.
For an actual twenty-foot wide buffer.
So, we're obviously, we're pretty tight on space. We've kind of made use of what we can. Something to keep in mind with trees, the sun, you know, the sun is moving in this direction across the project. These are trackers, so they're going to track with it. But there's, the taller the trees are, to the east or west particularly, the more shade that they can influence on these panels, and in this case also crops. So, the shading comes with a, a cost. No, not a cost, but it's, it influences, you know, the performance of the modules and perhaps even the viability of agriculture right there along with margins. If we're talking about twenty feet, if your interpretation, we're talking about a twenty-foot wide buffer?
Right. I mean, the, the board, so the provision, actually, there's two provisions, two, two things. One, the, the code does provide that, you know, the, the landscaping can be reduced in height because of shading of the solar panels. So, that is one thing that's in the code. That gives the planning board discretion in. And then also, you know, twenty foot is, is the default. But again, based on the constraints of the site, the planning board has the ability to, to reduce that. But, you know, I think, you know, a good point is made with respect to the, the height of the trees. In essence, you're really not going to be screening it from the orchard per se. You would really more or less be screening it from traffic going westbound on Myers Corners.
Right.
And, you know, so to get a tree high enough to screen that, you, you may or may not, you probably will be screening.
Screening panels.
Shading, shading, shading some of the panels.
Yeah. Also imagine that, I mean, you've, you've done some clearing on your side of the property line, but the other side of the property line is wooded, right?
No.
To, no?
It's, it's open and in orchard. You know, all that's there right now is what's along that property boundary. There may be a rock kind of head.
Like an old rock wall in the orchard, yeah.
Yeah. I know there is some through the project. There probably is right there too. And this is the stuff that's just grown out there amongst the rocks because you can't move through it.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, I get the point of screening. I don't want to get too soon on it.
Yeah, no, no, I get the, I said, I understand the concern that everybody's bringing up, but again, it's not, yeah, it's not going to hide. At the end of the day, it's not going to hide it.
Yeah, you're going to see it no matter what.
Right, that's...
You're not going to hide it in its entirety, but you may hide it a little bit.
Right, you can buffer it a little bit.
You know, when you're coming down that, that road, you're looking to the west, you see, get the most amazing beautiful sunsets, believe it or not, right there. So, when you see these beautiful sunsets, do you really want to see all, if it hides it a little bit?
Well, when you're coming down, right.
For the town to maintain this country-esque, you know, beautiful place that we...
Yeah, everyone I've, who I've spoken with in town, their biggest concern is, you know, what you're going to see. So, that's what I'm addressing.
I mean, if the applicant can provide a cut from, you know, some location on Osborne Hill, or I'm sorry, Myers Corners.
Myers Corners Road, yeah.
You know, and, you know, just show, you know, in essence, you know, a cut through with the height of the solar panels, height of landscaping, location of the fence, you know, and then, you know, what area the panels would be shaded by the trees. Maybe that can give you some kind of...
Give you a little idea of how much is really going to be open and exposed.
But, I mean, I...
Just looking at street view along Myers Corners, looking through the orchard.
Let's sit down, eight, eight feet down.
Yeah, but you've, you've got the orchard screening you from where these solar panels would be as well. Just, just to keep that in mind, yeah. I mean, it's, I, I think that the visibility of it will be, I don't know. The idea that you're going to be looking down into it and see the whole thing.
Right.
I don't think that's what you're going to see. I think that...
You're probably going to see a big chunk though.
Yeah, I think that the best visibility of it was going to be along the frontage though.
Yeah, I mean, what you're going to see, you know, the orchard goes back.
Not just a tree, just a tree. The problem with planting trees on a berm is that if you plant them, they're just dying.
You're still going to be looking at...
We've been down that road before with other projects.
I mean, look, looking at the, I think Malcolm's point is pretty well, you know, the back half of the property is going to be screened by the orchard.
Yeah.
Um... You know, you're really just kinda looking at this line here.
Right.
So, I don't...
We've, we've offered plantings to screen. You never fully hide these things.
Yep.
I work on a lot of solar across the state, all the way up to really big farms that take thousands of acres to build. What makes this project unique, and not to over-romanticize it, but I think it's a thing, is there's, this isn't the sort of solar farm that's just cold and just sitting there. There's gonna be activity. This is farming. You're gonna see the lab, and you're gonna see the tomato plants.
This whole town is farming.
I don't think it's a, yeah, it may not be a bad thing to catch those little glimpses of it as you're driving by. I think it's kind of a neat fixture. Again, in the world of solar, this is unique and novel. So, that said, we, we have proposed screening because we, we wanna offer that visual mitigation to the extent practical. You can never fully hide it and where folks may see it, you know?
So, so to the extent, you know, this, basically, the orchard begins about two hundred feet in off the corner, off, see that corner? No, the other...
The other corner.
Yep, it's right there. So about two hundred feet north on that line is where the orchard begins. So the orchard is over there. So the first two hundred feet there is, wouldn't be screened by the orchard. You know, the orchard is towards the back of the property, but that, you know, the first two hundred feet there.
The orchard does have a line, just based on this, the orchard does have a line.
We'll redraw it.
Hold on, here. I mean, Jim's right, there's a bunch here, but I'm also seeing some here.
Oh, yeah.
And if I draw my street view up here, I just see the neighbor's property, and there's a bit of a hill there and coverage, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's... So, I mean, what's everybody's feeling with it, then? I mean, it's kinda gonna be...
They'd like to screen it as best as they can.
Screen it the best they can without obviously screening sunlight to the plants or the panels.
And have them focus on sort of a, a mid-story, like a lower...
Yeah, something that's not gonna...
Some line of, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Something that starts very low and will max out at approximately seven to ten feet or something. And they'll, they'll come up with something that is a line of screening, some, some reduced version of what's along the front that can be put in along that.
I mean, we're, we're space limited. We'll certainly take a look at this and see what we can leave.
See what's possible, yeah.
So, so providing information, you know, like some photos or a description of what's left post-tidying, taking a look at what landscaping alternatives we might be able to squeeze in there. Were you, were you requesting like a line of site profile or a rendering or...
I think just a line of site profile might help. You know, maybe two locations, maybe one location showing how, again, you know, I, I, you know, if you can...
Yeah, if you give them, you get one right there that, that, you know, that corner where the, you know, you have that point that sticks out.
Mm-hmm.
Get something back in that area and then maybe something further back up the road a little bit, the other way, yeah.
Mm-hmm, something farther east on Myers.
Yeah.
And you can kinda estimate what the height of the trees are in the orchard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those are gonna be, you know, probably twenty, twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Probably not, they're not very tall.
No, I mean, I think that's gonna give you better screening, 'cause it's closer to the, it's closer to the viewer.
Yeah, yeah, it's no matter what. I mean, the further you are away from it, the more you're gonna see of it anyway.
Right.
Because again, you're, you're up on a, you know, as you get closer to All Angels, you're gonna be, you're gonna be at a higher elevation, you're gonna be looking down at it. Nothing's gonna, you know, but you're looking at that, and you're gonna be looking at the, you know, the office building behind it, the storage building and everything else, so you're gonna see that anyway, huh?
Cube Smarts back there now?
Cube Smart, that's right, yeah.
You never used to be able to see that building.
Yeah.
Okay, if I may, circle back to the wetland permit one more time, just 'cause I want the clarification. So are we deciding no boulders, that the fence is an appropriate boundary, and so, and that's already shown, figures that you've got?
Delineate, delineate it on the, on the actual site plan itself should be adequate.
Yeah, nothing's required in the deal.
Yeah, there's no, there's no reason to mark it because it's an area where they're gonna be able to encroach anyway for the agricultural aspect of it. Those boulders are normally in residential subdivisions where the, the wetland boundary, you know, is in the backyard of, of houses.
Yeah.
It's something there to delineate to let the, you know, homeowner know, hey, listen, you can't go beyond this point with any accessory structures.
Okay.
You were asking earlier if you needed to submit new plans, new physical copies? If we're using the, the fence, are you gonna need new physical copies of these plans?
No, the fence is already shown, isn't it?
Yeah, the fence is, it's got the circles studying the line.
That works.
That works.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll just fill out the one-page sheet and supply that.
Yeah, send that down.
I guess, forgive me for looking ahead to next steps, but if we can, we'll run this visual to ground, provide this to be as soon as we can, along with the, the page, and can we be put on, I mean, I think that's something that we can turn around in pretty short order. When, when could we feasibly show back up to the board and discuss this further, and hopefully maybe even...
Probably looking, I mean, you have to, stuff to submit the, you know, the two perspective points. How long is it gonna take to, to get that to the board to review?
It's possible that we could have all this flipped back to you. I don't wanna overpromise. I would say, you know, the middle of next week. I know I can commit to that possibly in the end of this week.
Yeah, so I mean, it looks like you're, you know, pretty much getting pushed back to, I believe that would be the May meeting?
The first.
Would that be, right? If they were to submit, if they were to submit next week, right, that would put them...
Are they submitting digital?
Yeah, unless you need hard copy and we can do it.
It's just, I mean, it's, it would just be my review and, and the visual for the board. It sounds like John already has what he needs and he's still working through it.
Yeah.
If you were to, if you were to get us plans on, on Friday or Monday, I would, I would be able to turn around a review for the next meeting in, in April.
For the next meeting?
Yeah, the seventeenth. It's a relatively limited review. That's the only reason I offer, yeah.
Right, it's just a, it's one visual aspect of what it's gonna...
Yeah, I, I won't be commenting on this portion, so we'll have our review of the stuff that came in last week in time for the seventeenth.
For that, for next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So if you can get that in, I guess, in time for, you know, for the review by the planner, you know, and also for us to take a look at, you know, and we can kinda, I guess, well, that next meeting is kinda, we have a lot on currently, or no?
No.
No? So we could put you on for the next meeting, which would be the seventeenth, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
And we'll take a look at it and we can go from there. Fair enough? Okay, thank you.
Wait, 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 wait.
So we have to, if we do, with, with all this, and the comments that we really didn't have any, do we wanna go ahead and close the public hearing, or do we wanna adjourn it at this point?
Close it.
We close it, there.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded by...
Paul.
Paul? Right, okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
Do, do you still want me to prepare a draft of the resolution, or should we push that up?
I don't know if I would do that yet.
Yeah, okay.
Cause we haven't even completed...
I was gonna say, you still have, you still have the engineer's comments, so...
No, yeah, I...
Yeah, so we still need his, we still need his to incorporate whatever's unaddressed at the condition.
And potential modifications on screening, yeah.
Exactly. So I think with the next meeting, we can kinda go...
We'll figure it out, yeah.
Move it forward to the next one, if, if we're in the right aspect. Okay. All right?
So you gotta make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No, they closed.
We just did that.
No, no, but, I mean, okay.
We did, to adjourn the...
The application.
We closed the public hearing.
Right, but I mean, a motion to adjourn the application to the, I don't think, was there a motion to adjourn the application to the next date or no?
No, we usually don't do that.
They closed the public hearing and adjusted it.
All right.
I mean, we discussed it. I think if he's getting his paperwork in on time...
Okay.
To be, she's gonna put it, she'll, she'll put it on the schedule, so we did have some discussion on that.
Excellent.
All right, okay, so with that, we're on to our next item on the agenda, which is a discussion regarding the Aguado subdivision.
Good evening. Dylan Aguado, the applicant of the project. Phil Povell couldn't make it tonight, so I'm filling in. We've been here a few times already, and as far as I know, we have some minor comments to address, other than DEC and board health approval, which are in the works and really just waiting on resolution to finalize.
Which are, right, which are currently conditions of this approval. So you, you've reviewed the, the resolution as it's been drafted?
Yep.
Okay, there's no questions, concerns regarding it?
No, it's all pretty straightforward.
Okay, all right. So with that said, if the board has no questions or concerns, I entertain a motion to approve the Aguado subdivision.
I'll make it.
As drafted.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion seconded, made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion carries.
Thank you.
We're all set. All right, you too, have a good one. Okay, the next item is a discussion regarding, regarding Tassone Court addition of commercial use amended site plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this evening I come, my name is Steve Burns. For those of you that don't know, I represent the applicant. At last meeting, we discussed a couple things, including the resolution and the, the actual sewage adequacy. So I started to look into that and as far as, as far as the public records from partial access are concerned, the house that is the, the spa building is a three-bedroom house built in nineteen fifty-four, I believe, which would put it at a, at a sewage usage of, conservatively would be three hundred and ninety degree, ninety gallons per day, which is a hundred and thirty gallons per bedroom per day. It was probably originally installed with more of like a hundred and forty-five gallons per day per bedroom, but using the lower number, we're still gonna be okay for both retail and the, the current spa use. The, the spa is, is mainly massage and stuff like that. It doesn't, it doesn't, it does, it doesn't, it isn't water-intensive or water-usage intensive. So there's gonna be adequate, adequate sewage installed to, to support that use, and I just have to finalize that report for you. I want to, with that being said, I wanna address one of the, letter E, two E on the resolution is the, to show compliance with the, with the memos. I just wanna possibly add a note there that, that states that, that was one of the comments, was, was health department approval, and you guys had agreed that, that a report from me proving, showing that the sewage, sewage disposal system is adequate would be sufficient for that, for that condition.
I need to throw this to the town engineer here.
Yeah, I, I think what was discussed the last time they were here was if he could demonstrate that the proposed use flow generation would be less than what the historical use of the site would be, then there would be no real reason to seek health department approval.
Okay, so basically, so the items that we just discussed here regarding what the current usage for, you know, versus what was there, as long as that's put in writing.
Right, it sounds like he, he's gonna prepare a report that...
So he'll put, he'll put the report together to address that and submit that?
Yes.
To, okay, all right, for review, and then that will be, that would satisfy that condition as opposed to going to health department at this point?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any concerns with that?
No.
Okay, all right, so that, that's that. Any other questions regarding the resolution?
The only other thing that I, that I had was that it mentions building permits and things, and I'm not sure that there's gonna be any building permits required. The site's already built out and everything, unless there, there is a permit that I'm unaware of for the operation.
No, they have a CO, and the condition of the CO is that they get in here to have the use added to the site plan. So we're adding the use of service and retail?
Yes.
And I think it was an office.
Personal service.
Only going forward, if the owner has to get new tenants and the parking calculations are the same, I'd rather have the uses added now so they don't have to come back to you. And it would just be a simple change of occupancy.
Okay, and we have that, that's in here that is being used for, have those purposes for, for business office and personal?
Both, both uses are included in the description of the project, yeah.
Okay, all right, so with that said, there's no other concerns, then, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make it.
Awesome.
Okay, motion made, say it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, see you none, motion carries.
Thank you.
So you're all set?
Have a good evening.
All right, you too. Okay, we need to take a quick five-minute break. We're gonna adjourn. So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Or, no, sorry, hold on. So a motion to take a, a break.
It's too late, fast.
No, 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 no. It's too late, you didn't, you didn't vote out.
If he's going, let go.
Yeah, yeah, he took a, he's got, he's got no choice. All right.